Yeah, it was quicker. Thought I had it like I showered after.
Everyone, all to order, all right?
Okay, thank you. Please be seated. This is the fourth meeting of municipal council. I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabak, Haudenosaunee, Lenape'wak, and Atawondron peoples. We honor and respect the history, languages, and cultures of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area. The two-row Wampum Belt Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy Silver Covenant Chain, the Beaver Hunting Grounds Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabak, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishnaabak and Haudenosaunee. The three indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncie Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, customs, and cultures. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact council agenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. All right, so on the heels of us singing at our special council meeting, I'm delighted to let you know that we have a guest singer today. George McLeary is a member of the London Gospel Collective, who performed a three-concert series beginning February 25th at the Grand Theatre's Auburn stage. The London Gospel Collective are also one of the musical acts featured in the Green Bin promotional campaign, building awareness about the new Green Bin program. As a UNESCO City of Music, London is actively contributing to the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, placing music at the forefront of London's sustainable development actions. The London Gospel Collective are an example of a contribution to sustainable development. Please join me in welcoming George, who will now sing the National Anthem. And please rise for that. Thank you.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, and I'll just note that all members are present either here in the gallery or remotely. Disclosure of pecuniary interest. Counselor Hopkins?
Yes, I would like to recuse myself on item number 8.4, number 13, citywide five-bedroom limits. My son does own his student house in the near campus neighborhood.
Okay, others? So Counselor Hopkins, I'll just note for you, that also relates to bylaws 57, 69, and 70, when we get there. Okay, there are no recognitions for today. We have no review of confidential matters to be considered in public. We do have an item for council in closed session, so I'll look to colleagues for a motion to move into closed session. Moved by Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Ferrera. I don't see any discussion, so we will open that for voting.
Counselors Pribble, Trosso, and Frank. Counselor Trosso indicating yes. And Counselor Pribble indicating yes. Closing the vote motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, we'll look to Committee Room 5, colleagues. Okay, please be seated. All right, we're on to item 5, confirmation and signing of the previous minutes. We have two sets of minutes. I don't know if they're set up to do together? Yes? Okay, we can do them together, so I'll look for a mover of both sets of minutes. Counselor Ramon, Counselor McAllister is the seconder. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Counselor Trosso indicating yes. Closing the vote motion carries 15 to 0.
Item 6, communication and petitions. There are three items on the regular agenda, one added item. Those can all be referred to the different areas of the agenda where we're dealing with those matters, so I'll look for a general motion to do so. Counselor Stevenson, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Any discussion on referring those? Okay, we'll open that for voting as well.
Counselor Stevenson? Counselor Trosso indicating the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, we have no motions to which notice was given, so we're on to item 8, which is the reports. We'll start off with Community and Protective Services Committee, and I believe Counselor Ferrera, the vice chair, is presenting that report. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship and
Thank you, your worship, been reporting out for the third report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. Most consents, which is speaking about our multi-year agreements.
Counselor, well, I think what we'll do is we'll start with seeing if anybody wants. Do you know of any items that will be dealt with separately yet?
I believe I heard that someone wanted to pull eight point eight. Looking for anyone to pull.
Okay, yeah, well, I think we'll just do that. Items, Counselor, will need your microphone, Counselor Ferrera. Counselor Stevenson, go ahead.
Thank you, I wanted to pull seven, eight point one, number seven, the operational transition plan for four forty-six King Street.
Okay, so just that so far. Anything else? Then Counselor, I'll let you make a motion for the remaining items.
I will make a motion for the remaining items.
Okay, so the Counselor's moving items one through six and eight through ten on the council agenda. I'll look for any comments or questions on that. Okay. Yes, go ahead, Counselor McAllister.
I just want to take this opportunity quickly to say, in terms of item ten on the Remembrance Gardens, I just wanted to thank the committee. I know that was a late addition. Also wanted to take the opportunity to thank staff for working with me on that. You know, it's an area, means a lot to the Lord in terms of, you know, a solemn area to remember our veterans, and I really do appreciate the support from the committee, and I ask my colleagues support this, as there are some longstanding issues that we should address with that property. So, thank you.
All right, any other speakers? Counselor Stevenson, go ahead.
Thank you, just a quick comment to eight, the data regarding the relocation of homeless individuals, and I just wanted to thank staff. There was a lot of appreciation for the quarterly reporting that's going to be coming, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, so with those items opened and moved by the vice chair, comments are done, so we'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Ferrera, there's one more item left. You've got to move that one. So, it's item seven, which is the operational transit plan.
And I'll be, I'll move that item.
Move by the vice chair. I'll look for questions or comments. Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I just want to say I won't be supporting this motion. I had a long conversation with our staff, and I truly appreciate their efforts to return, to retain much-needed affordable housing units here in London, yet something seems very wrong. I'm concerned about how many other problems are out there amongst our other sixty-three providers. I've heard very concerning things about this particular property in recent months, very concerning high-risk behavior, and several empty units. It was set up as thirty affordable units for low-income single people, and those with disabilities, and then it became twenty supportive units for mental health and victims of domestic violence. Currently, all are in need of mental health supports, and ten of which have individuals with high acuity. We need affordable and accessible units, and it just seems as though all of our resources are being moved to the, and redirected to the high acuity. This, so I have two concerns with it. One is from the people perspective in terms of, are the, what is our responsibility in terms of governance and accountability and care for these people? And the other is, you know, making sure that we do have access to affordable and accessible units for those who are not high acuity, just for the regular Londoners who are having a difficult time financially. And when it comes to finances, this particular property, there was a three-and-a-half-million-dollar development in two thousand and nine, sixty-nine percent of which was funded by three levels of government. So that was two point four or five million. The current mortgage is less than one point two million. So, I know CMHA is looking at purchasing this property, and like I said, it's great that we're going to be able to retain it as affordable housing, but I'm assuming that they are purchasing it at far less than fair market value, and I'm having a hard time understanding why the three hundred thousand dollar deficit can't be absorbed through refinancing or through some other measure. London taxpayers are being asked to pay up to three hundred thousand, quote, "to help dissolve past and current operating deficits." Just in October, council approved the request from the Middlesex London Health Unit to keep our portion of their surplus in the amount of six hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, to make a payment on their variable-rate loan that they took out to move to City Plaza. One of my colleagues said at that time that this is good fiscal policy to pay off variable-rate loans, and I agree, if they're our debts. I'm seeing a pattern of London taxpayer money being used to fund shortfalls that do not seem to be our responsibility. I have a desire to help people and ensure that we have affordable units, but we have a responsibility here as a board of directors, especially when we're coming under such an increase in our property tax rate, that, you know, do London taxpayers want to pay out a deficit on a property that was, you know, there's concerning things happening there, and is that the best use of our money? I definitely want to see this retained as affordable housing, but I don't see it as a good investment of taxpayer money.
Okay, any other speakers to this? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Counselor Trosso. Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
All right, thank you, Counselor. On to the next report, which is eight point two, the third report of Civic Works Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair Hopkins to present that report.
Yes, I'd like to present the third report for Civic Works Committee. I have not heard from anyone. Wanting anything pulled? I do see a hand that's going up.
Yes, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you, I'd just like to pull five and eight, please.
Anyone else want anything pulled?
Yes, Mayor, if you could pull six, please.
Six? Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, so five, six, and eight so far, separate. Anything else?
Perhaps we could do five and six together to save time and efficiencies.
Is that okay with you, Counselor Stevenson? Can we do five, six, and eight together?
Yep, that'd be fine with me.
Excellent, okay. So, we won't do five, six, and eight yet. I'll turn it back over to Counselor Hopkins to put together a motion on the rest, but it looks like five, six, and eight, some colleagues want to deal with separately but together.
So I'll put one, two, three, four, seven, and nine on the floor.
Okay, that's moved by the chair. We'll go to discussion now. Okay. Counselor?
Yeah, if I could just give my report on the committee now, or do you want me to wait till the end?
If it's related to these items now would be appropriate, but other items we'll deal with at that time.
I'll wait till the end, then.
Okay, so we've got the items on the floor, one through four, seven, and nine. There's no discussion. Open that for voting.
Counselor Trosso indicating yes. Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Hopkins.
To put number five, which is two point five, the contract award for the East London Link and Municipal Infrastructure Improvements, Phase Three C, Highbury Avenue, on the floor.
Counselor Hopkins, the colleagues who wanted five, six, and eight pulled said that we could do them all together if you're okay with that.
I'll put five, six, and eight. Six is the rapid transit implementation at Clark's Bridge and Wellington Road, and eight is the East London Link, Phase Three A West, which is Dundee Street, on the floor.
Okay, so five, six, and eight, moved by the chair. I'll look for any comments or discussion on this. Okay, just give us a second just to get that vote ready. Okay, the vote's ready, so I'm going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
Counselor.
Well, I guess there's no point making my comments after the vote, so I will leave it for that.
Okay, that moves on to item eight point three, the fifth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Lewis to present that report.
Thank you, your worship, for the fifth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. I've had a request from Counselor Stevenson to pull item four. That's two point two from the committee agenda, that's the Housing Stability Services single source. I'm prepared to move all other items from that report, so one through three, as well as five and six, I'm ready to put on the floor now.
Okay, would anybody like anything dealt with separately than what the deputy mayor's proposing? Okay, so that means moved by now the chair of the committee, I should say, everything but item four. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
And, your worship, I'm now ready to put item four on the floor. This is the Housing Stability Services single source that was dealt with that committee. We had a robust discussion. We also made a couple of changes, and it is those changes that are reflected in the report today that are going on the floor.
Okay, moved by the chair. I'll look for discussion. Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I just want to begin again by saying thank you to staff. They spent a lot of time this morning answering a lot of questions, and I have a much better understanding of this than I did, and I do appreciate it. I'm still unable to support this motion, though. The premise of this is to stabilize the service providers, quote, "while a new system begins to scale up." We haven't seen the model that we are moving toward in terms of the impact on these service providers. I haven't heard any reason why we won't be in the same situation in two thousand and twenty-six, that is a shortfall of another four point six million, and I don't see how this is one-time funding when this is our base shelter providers. This four point six million does not create any additional beds or expand services. We are told that they can't operate without this increase in funding. The Whole of Community came out of a hunger strike where people stood on the front lawn of City Hall and said, "No more excuses, people are dying." Yet since then, I have heard so many excuses and little reporting on the number of deaths. A year ago, we were told that this new Whole of Community system response would mean there would be no more need for a winter response. Then we needed one desperately, and only Arcade was willing to meet that need or able to meet that need. The other organizations were unable. Now they need a thirty percent increase in funding, which we don't have, yet we are willing to dip into the operating budget contingency reserve for four point six million, when at the very same time, we are saying that there is no money for transit, or libraries, or the Housing Stability Fund, and the other programs that struggling low-income Londoners rely on to remain housed. I want to see the safety of our shelters improved. I want to see more shelter beds available and shelter spaces for couples and for other unique needs. This does not do that. In the one-time funding requests, there's fifty thousand for a phone system upgrade, forty-three thousand for HVAC insulation, close to eighty thousand dollars for computers, laptops, iPads. We've been asked to make up for fundraising shortfalls. I have still been unable to see the budget that goes along with the three million dollar London Cares contract from the previous year's winter response. So, for these reasons, like this, even this one-time funding request, you know, I don't see lockers to secure belongings. I don't see in this, in this motion, any sober housing options. How does this address the safety concerns that we hear about in the shelter? How does this address the concerns of homeless individuals and couples who do not want to be in a low-barrier space surrounded by drug use? How does this fit into the bridge we are building as we walk across it? What will happen next winter? We've been told there's no funds available for next year's winter response, so I'm hoping that we can hear that there won't be a need for one. How are taxpayers supposed to understand that we have money to give a thirty percent increase to our shelter operators while all of our other, or most of our other boards and commissioners, commissions, are held to five percent or some other smaller figure? Do London taxpayers agree? I don't think they do, and so I'm not going to be able to support this motion. As much as I do want, and I do value what our shelter operators are doing, this just doesn't seem, I need a more whole picture in order to be able to support this.
Okay, other speakers? Counselor Prible, go ahead.
Thank you, and as well, thank you to the staff for all the work that was done with these organizations. I'm just going to kind of repeat what I said at the last, last week's meeting. A lot of these organizations, they reached out to us throughout the last year, and they mentioned, you know, if we, if we receive a longer commitment, we can plan, we can plan better, we can find certain savings. And with this proposal, and I do understand that there are inflationary, inflationary situations which we are all experiencing, but I just felt that these increases are, some of them are quite high, and it doesn't reflect, if we were, so what are the savings from some of these organizations if we really made a commitment for two years? So I would like to have a proposal, I have a referral proposed, and the referral is to direct this back to the staff, and for our staff to get back with these organizations, and based on the two-year commitments from our side, if they were to sit with them and look for potential findings of the cost savings. Adnaih DeKlerk could please bring this up?
Sure, we, we just need a seconder for the referral. Seconded by Counselor Stevenson, okay. So, referral's moved and seconded. We're now on the referral, so we will bring that up on the screen so that colleagues can read the referral, and I will start debate on the referral. So you'd like to start, Counselor Prible? This is a new motion now, it's a referral.
Okay, so I'm just going to-
On the referral.
I'm just going to add to the, to the referral, repeating myself, I really think that if our staff can sit together with these organizations and look at the potential findings and savings, and I do understand that these savings that are going to reflect in the property tax increases, as some people ask me about if this would decrease, I totally realize it's not, but on the other hand, I do believe we need to find, we got to be accountable, everyone to, we got to be accountable to Londoners and our staff to us, and I'm just hoping that there will be savings found after this additional initiative. Thank you.
Sorry, on the referral, Counselor Prible has spoken. Other speakers to the referral. Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I'll just quickly say that I'm supporting the referral in the hopes that what comes back is something that I can support, because I do want to provide that two-year stability to the shelter system. It just needs to be stable with stable funding.
Other speakers to the referral. Counselor Rahman, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, I'm just wondering if staff might be able to clarify with the referral what the implications of referring might be.
Mr. Dickens.
Through you, your worship. Our civic administration team has been working for a couple of months now with service providers to land on the number that you see before you in this report, so there has been multiple back-and-forths to try and land these budgets to pare back where we thought we could pare back. The implication- The implication of this would be we would want to make sure we turn around and come back to committee quite quickly, as the service agreements do end at the end of March. New ones would come into effect April 1st. The February SPPC at the 27th would require a, a report into the Clerk's office by Friday at 9:00 a.m. So, with budget being on Thursday, it doesn't give us a lot of time for contract negotiation reporting back this month. Also, the, the due process has taken place, and I'm not sure how optimistic I could be that we would find the level of savings that this type of effort would garner.
Counselor Rahman.
Thank you, that was helpful. I'm supportive of finding ways to find efficiencies. I don't think that, at this time, we would be having a conversation that would lead to an ability to do that in such a short period of time. I do believe that organizations are understanding of the fact that we have cost pressures as well and that we, we need to look for opportunities to find those efficiencies and savings. But I will say, I was concerned on item B. I am still concerned around seeing the continued mentioning of fundraising support and coverage of fundraising dollars or loss of events or things like that that were listed in this report. I will be looking for ways to address that in our upcoming committee meetings and such, because I think it's something we're going to see more of this year with organizations realizing that they're going to have some shortfalls and wanting to find other places to make up from them. So, I think we do probably need a policy in general around fundraising support and when we, when we do provide that, that backstop and where we don't. So, at this time, I won't support the referral, but, because of the timing of the contracts. But I do appreciate my colleagues bringing these concerns forward.
Any other speakers on the referral? Okay, seeing none, so we're voting on the referral. So, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion fails, three to 12.
So, referral fails, we're back to the main motion as was put on the floor. Two peoples have spoken to it, any other speakers? Okay. Seeing none, then, oh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Sorry, Your Worship, to put my hand up late. I wanted to wait and see if anybody else wanted to speak first. But I will say, I share a number of Counselor Rahman's concerns around this. And I hope that both civic administration and the service providers are hearing those concerns, because we cannot continue to be asked to backstop fundraising goals that weren't met, those kind of things. I recognize that this two-year contract is gonna give them some stability, some time to adjust as the hubs are stood up, and noting that two of those are now up and running. Both the Atlosa and the YOU hub are, are now serving folks in need, so that's great. I recognize we're going into an adjustment period. But to the, the points that colleagues have made, at the end of this contract, another 30% increase and another fundraising backstop and consultant fees and things like that are gonna get a hard no from me. So, this is a transition contract for me, but that's because of the point in time we're in. Moving forward, I hope that this opportunity is taken to make some systemic changes to how things are done so that it is more sustainable in future years.
Okay, any other speakers to the main motion? You've already spoken, Counselor. You spoke, and then you moved to referral. Okay. Seeing none, we're gonna open this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
And that concludes the fifth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee.
All right, well, before you sit down, the third report of the Planning and Environment Committee is up, and I know Counselor Chair Lehman is remote, and I think he asked if you would present that report as the vice chair, so I'll let you proceed with the Planning and Environment Committee report.
And that's why I stayed standing, Your Worship. I'll get my exercise doing a stair climb at the end of the meeting and just stay standing through this report. So, on behalf of Chair Lehman, I am, I have been asked to pull item 14. That's 3.9 from the committee agenda, Adelaide Street North and 795 Windermere Road. I've not been made aware of any other items colleagues want dealt with.
Counselor Hopkins declared a conflict on 13 as well, so we'll have to do that one second.
Okay, so we'll pull 13 as well. So, I'm prepared to move one through 12 and 15 at this time.
Okay, I'll look for others who want other items pulled from that list. Okay, so you can proceed with that motion. So, the Chair, or the Vice Chair is moving one through 12 and 15. So, that's on the floor, any discussion on those items? All right. Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Counselor Stevenson? Counselor Stevenson? Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
And, Your Worship, I'll prepare to put item 13, 3.8 from the committee agenda, the citywide five-bedroom limits and increased permissions for additional residential units on the floor.
Okay, so that's on the floor, any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero with one recused.
And, Your Worship, I'm now ready to put item 14 on the floor. This is 3.9 from the committee agenda, 1310 Adelaide Street, 795 Windermere Road. Counselor Frank has asked for this to be pulled, and I will advise the council as well. The Counselor Privel has circulated a potential amendment on this application as well.
Okay, that's on the floor. By the Chair, I'll look for speakers to this. Counselor Frank. It's kinda, I tried to look at both of you at once to give equal opportunity, so you put your hand up first, go ahead.
Thank you, yes. I was hoping to have this pulled and dealt with separately, as I voted against it at committee. And I'll just reiterate a couple of points for those who missed the scintillating meeting of planning. I'm generally not supportive of this development application. I do think our job as council is to approve development applications that make good sense, and I don't think it's necessarily our job here to approve development applications just because they took a really long time. I also don't think it's our job to make sure developers get their return on investment. So, I think sticking to prudent planning decisions is really what we are supposed to be doing here. And I personally can't say with a straight face that approving McDonald's drive-through in a floodplain is a good planning decision. And I think that buying this piece of land and trying to develop it was always a gamble, and I don't think it's a gamble that is going to or should pay off because it's in a floodplain. I understand legally that people are allowed to rebuild on the same square footage that's on an existing floodplain. I don't think that's a very compelling planning decision for me in this case, especially when we know that the intensity has gone up significantly. And I think that when we know better, we should do better. So, in regards to this development also being engineered to be flood-proof, because there'll be a moat around it, I really don't think that, again, that is a compelling reason to approve it. I think that we see a lot of time, most consultant reports will agree with the developer, and I think that just because something is said to be flood-proof, given the impacts of climate change and our increased flooding incidents, we know this area floods pretty much every single year and floods significantly. It's not a little flood, it's a very damaging flood. I do think that this area will flood and this, this development will be eventually underwater, regardless of whether or not there's a moat and a drop ridge. So, I just want to reiterate that, if, as well, if this development does get approved and goes to Upper Thames and gets denied, I would encourage all my colleagues to respect the work of the conservation authorities. It is 100% their lane to comment on hazards, and floodplains are hazards. So, floodplains are literally the lane of conservation authorities, and it is their literal job to ensure the safety of people and property. So, if this does go through, I encourage everyone to let the conservation authorities do their work, as I think it's important work and they are trying to protect people and property. So, I won't be supporting this for the reasons I just explained and would hope that other people as well will reject this development application.
Thank you, other speakers. Counselor Privel, I think you said you had an amendment, so we're probably waiting on you. Go ahead.
I was wondering if anyone else wanted to speak towards it. As you can see, I circulated an amendment, and the amendment states that decreasing the number of units from four plus the restaurant to two plus the restaurant, so three units, that's the, that's the proposal for my amendment. I just want to state, and I really spent a lot of time on this one, talking to, to the developers, our staff, and went through the reports, and they're actually, the area, and no doubt that this area has been flooded before.
Counselor, before you go too far, which you have every right to debate your amendment, let me just see if there's a seconder for what you're, what you're, what you're looking to do. You said you circulated it, I don't know if everybody's seen it. You're willing to second, okay, so you got a seconder, so we're gonna get that up on the screen.
Okay.
We're now gonna move to the amendment, so new speakers list, and you'll be allowed to speak to the amendment now, Counselor Privel. So, feel free to go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry, I just, it's council, so I wanna, gotta follow the procedure, so go ahead.
Totally understand. So, there were, as we know, and I wouldn't say that I'm in this era a lot as well because of the soccer fields, because of the golf, golf course right beside. And, yes, it certainly did get flooded before, I wouldn't say that it's on every-year basis. But one of the things that I was looking at, are there any improvements with this project in actually improve the flooding, the flooding situations that we had in the past? And there actually is, and there's gonna be a craning of the channel that's gonna be 16 to 20 meters wide that actually is gonna improve the situation for flooding for this area. And I talked to a lot of residents, and yes, there were, there were more against, certainly, that reached out to me than the ones for, but the ones that were for, they actually thought that it was a good idea in terms of the facilities around to have this establishment there. The ones they were against, when I talked to them, there was a lot of misunderstanding about this piece of land. The first one is that it is not owned, some people thought that it was owned by the city, so it's not. It's a privately-owned lot with a commercial use permit. So, whoever owns it, they can, just like this developer, he came forward and he proposed this project there. In addition, I just want to let you know that with this development, there is a Thames Valley Parkway extension proposed parkland dedication from 2 to 7.3%. New fieldhouse, approximately 67 and a half, 67 and a half square meters in the area to provide public washroom facilities, municipal storage, and changing facilities. Reconstructing municipal parking lot, the parking lot. Restoration of those encroached lands back to natural state. And there is also another thing that the people didn't think, there's gonna be an additional access road south of this development. So, I just wanna say that all these positives come with it, and when I researched it more and talked to more people, there is actually with this project, in terms of this area, it's gonna be an improved condition in terms of the flooding and floods in this area. Thank you.
Okay, so this is on the amendment. I'll go to the next speaker on the amendment. Go ahead, Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to the Counselor for the amendment. I will not be supporting it, though. I do appreciate the work that is done into reducing the commercial space, but I think it's really, really important that we do not do planning on the fly. That's how it feels to me. I would, if this amendment does fail, I would put a referral on the floor to have it go back to civic administration and to Upper Thames and to the applicant to further discuss this application. We know quite well, there's a lot of engineering work that is being going on here. It's like a moat that's being built. We do know it's too intense. This is a new application, four years in the making. A lot of work has gone into this application, and I think it needs to still continue to have further discussions. We know that Upper Thames is the authority when it comes to giving permits on floodplains. Counselor Frank said it very well, the authority is there to protect people and property. That is their job, and I don't think it's up to us to start making these decisions here at council. We don't even know if, if that's going to be supported through the process. There is a process, the applicant is welcome to do that, but I would definitely encourage staff, Upper Thames, and the applicant to continue refining and keeping it less tense. We heard loud and clear at the public participation meeting the effects of owners and their concerns. We do need to do our due diligence in protecting property here as well on council. So, I will not be supporting it, but we'll be bringing forward a referral.
Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Worship. So, I'll just say right up front that if a referral is brought forward, I won't be supporting it. The first pre-consult with Upper Thames on this piece of property was 2014. We are 10 years now since the first pre-consultation. And I have a letter here that was given to the applicant from Upper Thames on December 8th of 2023. "The proposed structure must not exceed the total footprint area of the original structure as it existed April 25th, 2000. Addressed, the gross floor area was 982 square meters. The proposed development has a gross floor area of 975 square meters." The flood issue that has been raised, the development has been designed, this is Upper Thames comments, "The development has been designed with floodproofing to be finalized through the Section 28 application hearing process, not through the Planning and Environment Committee, through the Section 28 permit process." So, on that, Counselor Frank and I agree. That is a decision for Upper Thames to make through their Section 28 process, but not for us to hold back further at the planning committee stage. So, like Counselor Privel, I received some emails on this from people who thought that this was city-owned land. It is not, and in fact, not only is it privately held, but it has commercial use zoning as of right. So, we don't get to judge whether we like a McDonald's or a Tim Hortons or a dry cleaner or a Subway or whatever the tenant might be. That's up to the, the landowner and the tenants that they want to lease out to. Now, what we do get to consider is whether or not, from a planning perspective, the concerns have been addressed. To me, the concerns have been addressed around flooding, and I've heard that from both our staff and through the communication with Upper Thames, that they have some flood modeling, that they said the flood modeling has been completed and accepted. They have some floodproofing to, matters to finalize through Section 28. So, I'm happy to let them finalize that through Section 28. So, the idea that somehow this was going to be land that was going to be, become city parkland, open space, not have anything developed on it, it's just false. It's privately owned, and it's commercially zoned. Yes, there are restrictions on what can happen here, and, and when it comes to even the question of whether a drive-through is more intense or not, and I appreciate that the Counselor, the Ward Counselor, worked with the applicant, the applicant's willing to go down to a smaller number of units to address the intensity, great, I appreciate them doing that. When it comes, from my personal perspective, a drive-through versus a parking lot intensity issue is a matter of opinion, it's not a, a planning decision. What, some of the planning, there are good planning practices around drive-throughs, though, and we've seen it in the Colonel Talbot Road application that we just passed, where the drive-through is contained on-site and has a single entrance access point with all other vehicles going on-site. all other vehicles going on-site. That's a good planning principle to apply to drive-throughs, maintaining their entrance and exits within the site itself, so it minimizes traffic impacts. But whether a drive-through is more intense than additional parking spots, that to me is a matter of opinion, and it's why we have people both on our staff, professionally accredited individuals who are consulting for the applicant, Upper Thames, everybody has a different opinion on that, because it is subjective. It is not a hard, fast rule, it is a subjective interpretation of a planning application. So that is why I'm going to support the referral, or I'm going to support the amendment. I will not support a referral, and I will support the main motion as amended if the amendment passes.
Counselor Trosseau, and then Counselor Ramon.
Thank you very much. And just to respond to some of the comments that were just made, the fact that this application has been pending for a long time does not mean we should push it ahead. We still have to deal with it on the merits, regardless of how long it's been staying around. I'll reserve most of my comments for later, we're just on the amendment right now, but I'm not going to support the amendment because, for me, it just doesn't get to the gist of what the objection is to this application, which is the drive-through. And I'll save my comments on a referral and on the main motion until later, but I do appreciate you trying, and I do appreciate you talking to people in your area. This bumps up against my word, too, and I've gotten a lot of response, but I'm not going to be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you, to staff, I'm just wondering if staff can address, does decreasing it to two plus a restaurant address the number of units on the property concern?
Go ahead.
Through your worship, in terms of the reduction in intensity, it still allows the range of uses that were contemplated through the staff-recommended zoning. However, we did not have requirements for the number of units. This is an addition that's being proposed by the Counselor. It's still the same square footage, it's still the same number of parking spaces, it's just an idea of reflecting in terms of the level of intensity of the range of uses with the drive-through facility. So my understanding with the Counselor's motion is to identify the number of units within the range of units that are contemplated for this property.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer. Okay, my second question is around the channel improving the flooding in the area. I'm just wondering if staff can comment on whether or not they believe that the channeling improves the flooding in the general area.
Mr. Maythers.
Through your worship, that, all that assessment has been completed by the applicant's engineer, has been reviewed by the conservation authorities, so that's not something that we get deeply involved in, but our understanding, based on what's been provided and the comments from the conservation authorities, that they feel that it does address the issue.
Thank you, and through you, I, I mean, I think it's pretty easy to understand that I've struggled with this one. I voted against it at planning for the intensity on the site based on the number of buildings. With the number of buildings addressed in this motion amendment, sorry, I am supportive of moving forward. I think that the applicant has shown a willingness to work with us on potential strategies to address this concern, and to provide for additional contemplation of what can be put on the site, and I appreciate their willingness to work on that. I agree personally, it may not be my preference, it may not be what I personally would like to see at that corner, but I also think that I have to respect that staff looked at this and the types of use that were specified, this is within the types of use that were specified, so now that the number of buildings is settled and that they believe that this will help with the flooding in the area, as well as the contemplation of some additional pathways, walking paths, as well as the fieldhouse, I think that satisfies me in where we're heading with this particular development.
All right, next I have Counselor Stevenson and Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Counselor Prible for working with the developer on this, and from my understanding, the developer has been willing to work with us, and work with us, and work with us, and work with us, and work with UT-CRA. And I think, for me, like, we want people to develop in our city, and I know there's certain parameters, but outside of that, I think we need to let people do business and do their development. My understanding is the engineering allows for the flooding, and so I think we get to put our own subjective opinions on this aside and allow people to do what is allowed. So I will be supporting the amendment and the motion.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, and I'll be briefing, keeping my remarks just to the amendment, I'll speak later on to the motion at hand. I just want to thank the ward counselor for doing his work here, speaking to constituents, clarifying some, perhaps some misconceptions, and also working with, between the constituents and the developer here to find some medium ground to bring forth a proposal that could possibly work here. So I will support the ward counselor in his amendment.
Counselor Cuddy.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I too want to thank Counselor Prible for the work he's done in this, working with the developer. I attended the planning committee meeting, even though I'm not a member of committee, but I attended because this development comes very close to my ward, which is on the other side of the river. And I too, like Counselor Trosso, had a number of constituents contact me, and with varying, you know, thoughts on the subject. And I want to make a correction to maybe Counselor Frank and others who think this, they've been calling us a moat, and I guess you can call it a moat, but I did have a chance to speak with the developer at length. He explained the technology to me. I actually grew up on a farm and I understand drainage and so on, so I understood what he was explaining about the new technology, and I think, quite frankly, that it will work, and while there may be some flooding, it's really not our problem, it will be the problem of the developer and the owner, so I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, so we're on the amendment. Everybody's spoken, who wants to speak? We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 4.
It's not often I have to read the Planning Act during a meeting. So now that we've changed a bylaw that has had a public participation meeting associated with it, as per the Planning Act and our procedure bylaw, which if you're reading along is Section 11.21, "When council amends a proposed zoning or rezoning bylaw that has been recommended by a relevant standing committee after holding a public meeting by the relevant standing committee as required under the Planning Act, council shall immediately vote on the question of whether or not further notice is to be given with respect to that proposed bylaw as amended." So what would occur now is we would determine whether or not further notice is necessary, which means if council deems, yes, further notice is necessary, we would not pass those bylaws tonight at this council meeting, but we would at a subsequent council meeting, given the public the ability to write in any correspondence on this before council passes it. It's just one bylaw, yes. And if we said, no, no further notice is required, then we could actually proceed today. So this is solely within council's right to decide this under the Planning Act. So again, I know this is something you probably haven't dealt with yet this term, because it's not often that we would change, even if we change it in a small way, a bylaw at this committee that has just gone through a public participation meeting, so, but it's our obligation now to determine that question as whether or not we feel more notice is required. So I'm just going to get that motion and item ready for us to decide on, so just give So I need like a mover for the question of notice. So everybody wants to do it. So you're presenting already, so Deputy Mayor can move this. I'm happy to second, just to get it out of the way. We'll just have that question up in a second, and this is debatable, so colleagues can Okay, so I'm taking some advice here and I'm going to make a call. So motions generally should be given in the positive, so the motion that we're going to put is that more notice be given, not, no further notice be given. If someone else wants to move, they can. Like, obviously, this is a decision of council, so it doesn't really matter who moved it and who seconded it, we're making a decision here. So the motion is going to be, need to be refreshed, so everybody knows which way we're voting, and I'm going to read it out, so people following along or in the gallery can. So what we're determining now is, given we've changed a bylaw that had a PPM associated with it at committee, we're determining whether or not, which is in council's discretion, we give further notice of this, so whether we pass it today, whether we pass it at a subsequent meeting of council. So it's pursuant to Section 3717 of the Planning Act, as determined by municipal council, that further notice be given with respect to the proposed bylaw. So if you vote for this, we will not be passing those bylaws tonight, we will pass them at the next council meeting. If you vote against this, we have the ability to pass the bylaw tonight. And this is just the notice being attached to the main motion. We will have determined that question based on the amendment. We can still debate the main motion, and you still have the right to either vote for or defeat the main motion. This is simply a question of are we going to have notice given or not? Everybody's clear? I know we haven't done this before, so I'm happy to just make sure everybody knows what we're doing. Okay, so.
3417, not 3717.
Sorry, I said 37, I said 3714, it's 3417, section of the Planning Act. Clerk makes me, corrects me when I do that. Okay, so a vote for is yes, more notice be given, not pass today. A vote against is that we would, we could actually have the right to pass it today, but that'll be determined by the votes of council. Okay, everybody's clear? Debate can happen now. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Worship. And just through you, I'm just going to ask whether it's Mr. Maythers or Ms. McNeely to confirm that typically, when we amend an application at the committee level and there is a notice issue, we simply attach a clause that says, "And no further notice shall be given." Is that, can I just ask if staff can confirm that's the correct procedure at the committee level?
I can also have the clerk weigh in, who manages this at the committee level, if you'd like, and then, I think this is more of a procedural question, I'll have the clerk weigh in on how it's normally done at committee level, and why it's a little bit different when it comes from the committee with that already decided, it's before us. In this case, the amendment was generated here and it was not determined in the amendment, so, Counselor, or, sorry, Counselor. Clerk, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are parallel provisions in the council procedure bylaw related to the provisions required under Section 3417, as it is a recommendation to council, and under the Planning Act, it's council that determines whether any further notices to be given. Typically, the wording will be something along the effect that no further notice be given, that's a recommendation to council. Council is the final decision-maker, and there is a separate provision under the council procedure bylaw related to that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted colleagues to understand that there's a provision for doing this at committee as well. They're parallel, but they are slightly different in terms of how it happens at committee and council. I also wonder if through you, Your Worship, staff could indicate what the approximate Your Worship, if it helps, if the clerks don't have a precise number, if they can just confirm there is in fact a cost, that would be satisfactory.
I'm determining whether or not, under this section, it requires the same notice, or whether the notice of the council meeting is sufficient, the, so just let me sort that out, because I'm not going to get, put our staff in a position to give their advice on something that may not be relevant to this, so, and I may seek some legal guidance on this, just so that council's clear in its decision-making. So I'm going to ask for staff who are familiar with the Planning Act more so than I, and legal if necessary to weigh in. My understanding is it would be the same sort of notice provision that would be required under other sections of the act, but I'm not going to assume that myself, so I'd like to get your feedback on when we have to give further notice, whether it's circulated the same way, from both planning staff and legal staff, and then we will know, and I'll just say that's what we're doing, and then council can challenge me if they like.
Thank you. In response to your question, in terms of further notice, we would evaluate it whether or not it's more intense. In this case, the notice provisions, I was taking a look at the notice, it's the same square footage, it's implying the same, it's actually a less intense by putting the cap. So those are the evaluation criteria that we would consider in terms of further notice. My opinion, I don't believe a further notice is required, because it is a reduction in terms of what was previously circulated to the public. Having said that, in terms of further notice, it would involve a recirculation, 120-meter radius circulation to landowners, as well as publication in the landowner.
Yeah, I'll just see if our legal staff are okay to comment on this as well publicly.
Thank you, and through your worship, I think what Ms. McNeely's just given us is accurate.
Okay, so now that we've determined that, and I will say that I agree that that is the process we is the process we should follow. If council deems notice be given, then we should recirculate as we would under the other part of the Planning Act. If council doesn't, they can take your advice for what it's worth, but the question is to the councillor, what is the cost generally of circulating these things for a planning application, is the question the Deputy Mayor asked.
Through your worship, we know that the Londoner notice is about $200. Mailouts, not a hundred percent accurate, but we're looking at a couple thousand dollars at least.
Okay, you're speaking, I will start your time again.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, staff, for providing that commentary and feedback. It's helpful. I'm generally supportive of no further notice at committee, so here at council, I will be voting no. Even though I moved it, I will not be supporting further notice. As we heard, the opinion of our Director of Planning is that the unit cap does reduce the intensity, and so from a perspective of recirculating, I don't see value in spending public dollars on telling the public that it's actually going to be less intense than it was. Those who will object will have not changed their opinion, because it's less intense. So I think that all we're really doing is spending some money and delaying until the next council meeting, so I will be voting no on the further notice be given motion.
Okay, any other speakers to the notice, further notice being given motion? Go ahead, councillor Hopkins.
Yes, I do have a question through you to staff. Are public dollars being spent on the notices that are going to be sent out? I guess, I just want clarification.
Go ahead.
Through your worship, this is part of the normal application processing, so it'd be part of the application fees that we've already taken. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Frank.
Thank you, and just a quick follow-up. When I do 120-meter radius around this location, it includes the Waltzing Weasel, the Tin Cup, one house, and the Caddyshack. So I'm wondering, just, I understand that maybe in a larger area, it would be thousands of dollars, but I'm wondering maybe if you could comment on if it would be thousands of dollars for this, for the four houses that fit in the 200-meter radius?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. I don't actually have the full amount in terms of the distance and the actual cost. If it's within that circulation area, there are apartment buildings nearby along Windermere, so that would also involve that notification as well. But without actually having done the circulation, it's very difficult to provide that answer for you.
Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, I will be supporting, or I will be saying no to this motion of notice. The public does not like to see us do things twice, and I don't think it's going to look good to send out a notice saying that we're reducing things from the way they were. So I do not want to see a notice.
Councillor Privil.
I'll be as well voting no, and the reason why, as was solidly said by the Deputy Mayor and our staff, it's the intensification is lower, and I think we are just delaying our decision, so I'll be deciding no, and I would like to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Trosaw.
Wouldn't it make more sense to the chair or the clerk to vote on the referral that's coming up, because it would moot this question, and if the referral happens, there probably would be the need for another notice anyway if there was a change?
Yes, councillor, so the referral, or the, so there's no referral. The amendment passed, under the procedure bylaw, it says, "Shall immediately vote on the question of whether or not..." So we're dealing with this now, because that's what our rules say, we will do it in that order. So although it might make sense, that's not what we say, so we have to deal with it now.
Okay, well, along those lines, then, one question I have is, where do we stand with this application with the developer in terms of any time deadlines? Are we, are we in risk of bumping up against the time deadline, or does that not apply here?
Through your worship, there is no exact timeline. It's well past the 90 days, as they've indicated it was some time ago when the application was made, and the applicant can appeal at any time. Thank you.
I mean, my problem with not supporting this is, there seems to be mandatory language in the Planning Act saying we should do this. Am I wrong about, I guess that's a question to somebody, either the planning staff or legal staff, but do we have discretion in this matter if the Planning Act tells us we should do it if something happens, and that's something happened?
So councillor, I will answer that, because I have the section of the Planning Act before us. It's not that the Planning Act is saying that we shall provide notice, it's that we shall determine whether or not notice is to be given with respect to the proposed bylaw. So as you heard, this is often dealt with at the committee, when they change something before it gets here. The reason why this feels a little bit awkward is because it is not very often that we change the bylaw at council, and so this has to be determined under a different section of the procedure bylaw, but the Act basically says not that we should or should not, it's that we shall determine whether or not further notice is to be given. So it's within our full jurisdiction to do it or not. It doesn't prescribe that there is one way or another.
Okay, thank you very much. I mean, I still think this would be more expeditiously dealt with if we did the referral first, but I understand what you're saying, because it says immediately, so here, I think I, yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other speakers on the idea of determining the question of notice? Just make sure you read how it's worded, so you can determine which way you want to vote. I see none, so we're going to open this for voting. Just refresh your screen, because we changed it to a motion in the positive. The motion that you're voting on right now is that further notice be given in respect to the proposed bylaws. It is in the positive, it is a motion to give notice.
Closing the vote, motion fails four to 11.
Okay, so determined that question, the amendment has passed, we've determined the question of notice, we're back to the amended motion now, which is a new motion, and a new speakers list. And I will just make a comment that, from the chair, this is why it is very, very helpful to circulate things a little further in advance, and also very helpful to, when possible, although there is the right of council to deal with things at council, to deal with it at committee as often as possible, but I could have determined a lot more of this if I would have had just a little bit more notice, and I appreciate you allowing me to work through this a little bit on the fly with our staff. It's necessary when I don't have a heads-up, that is enough for me to determine these questions in advance. We will proceed with the amended motion voting now, or speaking, so I'll look for I need a mover and a second for the as amended motion. Moved by Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by councillor Cuddy. So as amended motion on the floor, speakers. Councillor Lehman, go ahead.
Thank you. So basically, this comes down, I think, to whether we should allow something to be built on a floodplain, and I agree with councillor Frank and councillor Hopkins, you know, that upper Thames needs to basically weigh in here. That's the reason we have upper Thames Conservation Authority, is to provide guidance and actually have legislative rules or authority to allow this to happen. So from my standpoint, I see a building that is decaying there, I'd like to see something done with that building, quite frankly. But let's move ahead, and let us, get it to upper Thames, who have been part of the process so far, and have been guiding potential development there. So let's, let's move to the next step, and whatever they decide, that's fine, if they believe that their concerns are met regarding building on this particular section of the floodplain, and so be it.
Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, I just had a couple of questions for staff around the city benefits that come out of this. From my understanding is there were several city benefits requested, and then some added, and I just wondered, is there a standard practice for that? Is there a certain dollar amount that we attribute, or a percentage to the development? Like, how do we know how many public benefits we get out of a particular development?
Go ahead.
Through your worship, I may, I'll start, and I may pass on to my colleague, Monsieur. In terms of the benefit for here, we know that there's no bonusing anymore with these zoning bylaws. So this is a nice thing to do, that the applicant is offering, but there's no obligation for them to do that as part of, tied with this development application. So what we'll try to do our best is work it through in terms of the site plan that comes forward, and work with the applicant that way. It's also on the lands that are not owned by the city, they're upper Thames lands, so there's that facet to also work through. In terms of the dollar value, I don't have a figure for you on that. Those details still have to be worked through, but I, my understanding is restoration to the parking facility, as well as this fieldhouse that the applicant has identified, and potentially working with our parks planning folks.
Thank you, and a follow-up. So my understanding was that the city had, makes the asks around these public benefits or city benefits, is that true? Like, is it not us asking the developer to do these things?
Through your worship, we did not ask for this, this is something that the applicant has offered to do.
I think maybe part of the question here is, under old versions of the Act, things like section 37 and bonusing with some types of developments, the city could compel community benefits from a zoning application. However, that section of the Act no longer exists, and so although these things come up from time to time, there isn't, there isn't a built-in mechanism now where the city used to do it, it doesn't do it anymore. Go ahead, councillor.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the clarity there. I am going to support this, and I would, I am concerned about the amount of times I hear how difficult it is to do business and development in London, and whether we agree with this particular development or not, it goes through the process, the engineering is designed to meet standards, we have our particular rules and restrictions, and after that, it should be the right of the property owner, I think, to be able to do what they want within our minimal restrictions. So I'm a little concerned when we get into whether we want it or not, whether we like it or not, because that's so subjective. And so for me, I'm grateful to the developers who persevere, and who are willing to contribute the public benefits, it's always very nice to have, and I do appreciate those developers who persevere and add new and exciting things to our city. Some people will find whatever it is that goes out to be exciting.
Other speakers to the as amended motion. Go ahead, councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I do have two quick questions. I want to make sure I understand the zoning that is in place on this property. I know it was referred to that it is a commercial by right, but I'd like to understand the zoning. Through you, to staff.
Sure, go ahead, Ms. McNeely.
Thank you, through your worship. The zoning is for an open space special provision, the special provision being a commercial recreation establishment.
Thank you for that. And the second question I have is regarding the question around the, if the lands do get flooded, would the city be included in any lawsuit? Go forward.
Well, I'll look to our legal counsel on a possible answer to that.
Thank you, your worship. It's difficult to predict that. It really depends on the circumstances, but, I mean, lawyers generally look for a number of defendants, so it's not, not impossible, but it is really difficult to predict.
Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you for that. I know it's difficult to predict, but I do think the city would be named in a lawsuit when it comes to flooding. So basically, I'm just going to go back to what I said before, I am not going to be supporting this recommendation, I am supportive of staff's recommendation. What we have done here is we have ourselves decided what should happen, planned it. To me, it's planning on the fly. I'm not a planner, I appreciate the board council's work on this, I think more work can be done, four years, there was a lot of extensive work done on this, and I think that work could have continued to decrease the intensity that would allow for this development. So we've heard from the public, I am very disappointed that we would not, since we've changed the plan, that we wouldn't even send notices out to the public. It wouldn't cost us very much, there's a few, it wouldn't cost a lot, and I just don't understand why we wouldn't want to include the neighbors in particular, on what we have done here at council.
Sorry, go ahead. It's a point of order, so what's your point of order?
Yeah, point of order is, it was a decided matter of council already, that we weren't going to send notice out.
Right, yes, councillor, the councillor's commenting on her opinion. It has been decided by council what we're going to do with notice, so I'll let you continue with your comments, but I appreciate the councillor pointing that out, I believe the councillor who's speaking knows that, and is just referencing it in her comments, and it is unrelated to, or related to her case that she's making about her vote today.
Thank you for that. It's nice to be able to express my opinion here. One of the reasons I am not supportive of what council has decided, moving forward on these changes, is one of the things that we know is that we do not build on floodplains. This is a development on this property. We are placing buildings, there's a tennis court, a small Good Life facility, we are putting in a commercial unit with a restaurant, with a drive-in. It is not like-for-like for me, that is something that is out of my comfort level that we should be deciding on. It is too intense, I don't think too much has changed here. And I also think it's really important that when we make these decisions, that we understand what is happening in the neighborhood and the concerns, and take that into consideration. So I will not be supporting this motion.
Okay, the as amended motion. Any other speakers? Councillor Trosaw, go ahead.
I did come to the PEC meeting, I was very surprised at that meeting to see the amendment. I thought the staff report was very sound, and it was based in science, and it was based on public policy, and it was based on the fact, and I think the public gets this, it's a floodplain, it's a floodplain. And yes, there are all sorts of engineering feats that we're capable of these days, and whether you want to call it a moat, or sort of a high-tech version of an enhanced moat or something, one, and I'm not a scientist, but I know enough to know that if there's a flood, the water just doesn't disappear. And if it can't go into this particular McDonald's establishment because of the fortifications, could I just ask a scientific question, maybe from the planning staff, through the chair? Where does the water go?
Not sure if you can answer that, Mr. Maythers, but let me know your comments. Not sure if you can answer that, Mr. Maythers, but let me know your comments.
Through the chair. We don't have anyone here from the applicant that can speak to the actual modeling that was done or the, what they've come up with, but generally, it either has to infiltrate or it has to go downhill to, to the creek or the river or the water, natural water system, so there's only those two options.
Counselor Trosaw.
Well, my, my worry about this whole thing is it, it, it's not going to minimize the flooding that other property owners on the adjacent properties suffer. Whether it increases it or not, okay, I don't know, but it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to minimize the danger of flooding. We know from a historic fact that this area is flood-prone. We know that. We've got the pictures. We've heard the testimony. It is, it is not, it is, it is not speculative to say that you, you are incurring a danger to public safety if you build this type of facility on a floodplain, and I would urge you not to do it. Furthermore, I, I, I appreciate the, the, the answer that the solicitor gave us, because I think that's about the best answer you could give under the circumstances, but I, I know back in my days as a plaintiff's, plaintiff's attorney, I would pretty much have to join everybody right at the beginning because they're compulsory, joined the rules, and I, I think I would not want to not join the city. But, well, I know, I think this is something that I can talk about.
Hold on, Counselor, stop. Counselor Rahman has a point of order. I need your microphone.
Thank you, and through you. I just want to be careful. I understand we all have different opinions and perhaps we are subject matter experts in certain things, but I do get a little bit concerned when we start weighing in on legal opinion. We've done it twice now in the last, I don't know, 10 minutes or so, and I, I just have concerns about that. We're not here in a legal capacity, and we do have legal counsel here if we have questions, but I, I caution that we shouldn't be going in that direction with our conversation and raising a point of order for that reason.
Okay, hold on, Counselor Trosaw. So, point of orders have been raised. I'm going to say I think there is a fine line between a Counselor respecting and giving their opinion on a legal matter, but it rare, it bears no bearing on the decision of council. So I think colleagues can have all sorts of opinions on all sorts of things. What matters is what the actions of council are, so I think the caution is good. I, I'm going to, you know, I think the Counselor has heard the caution, and we can, we can be careful not to, not to project wider than our own opinion on this. But I think our legal staff gives advice to council, council acts as, as a group, and if one member of council wants to weigh in with their opinion on things one way or another, it's, it's the, it's the will of council that matters. That being said, I think the caution is a good caution. I'm not sure it's a point of order that I need to deal with beyond, beyond this point of order here. So I'll let the Counselor continue on.
Let me move on then and talk to the merits of the application. It's, it's, it's hard, it's, it's hard for me to not just oversimplify this. This is a floodplain. We are in a climate emergency. What we know as a matter of fact is that the intensity of climate incidents is likely to get worse before it gets better. I just don't see how this city can undertake the risk to public safety and the environmental degradation that would be caused by this project at this location. And the very fact that the property owner has been working on this for years doesn't mitigate our obligation as a council to act responsibly. And the fact that regardless of what we do, this will...
Counselor, just before I get any other, I just want you to be careful about projecting council's action as being responsible or not. I think you can have an opinion on what you feel is responsible or not, but let's not project it on the decision of council will be the decision of council. And I, and I believe every, every member of council believes they're, they're acting with responsibility when they're making those decisions, so we're not going to project that widely, but you can have that opinion yourself, say you don't feel this is a responsible action, but let's not project it on other members of council.
Let me rephrase that then, thank you. I believe that this would be, it would not be responsible for me, I believe, as a Counselor to support this. And I've heard a lot from people in my ward, and this isn't in my ward, but it's, it's very close, and people, people have a lot of regard for the soccer fields and, and the golf tee place. It's not in my ward, but it's, it's, it's on, it's on the side of it. I really want to urge members of council to vote no on this. Now, this is going to go to the upper Thames, probably going to go to other places too. I don't want to project the legal opinion, but this probably is not going to be the last word on it. And, but the very fact that there's this other set of eyes watch, watching this development doesn't, in my opinion, to me, take away my obligation as an elected Counselor to act, in, in my view, responsible. So I, I hope I've qualified that, and I am going to, obviously, I'm...
You've got about 30 seconds left, Counselor.
Okay, in, in closing, I'm, I'm clearly opposed to this, and I'm glad there are going to be other reviews, but I think this is not a good idea, in my opinion. This is not the sort of thing that we should be putting on a floodplain. There are plenty of opportunities for drive-through, fast-food operations in this city to not have to place them on a floodplain. So please vote no on this motion and restore the staff report.
Thank you, Counselor. Other speakers to the as amended motion. Okay, seeing none. Okay, seeing none, then we're going to open the as amended motion for voting. This is the committee's recommendation with the changes that we approved and the, the notice decision being decided on. So that's open for voting now.
Closing the vote, motion carries 10 to 5.
Okay, back to you. Thank you, Your Worship. That concludes the scintillating, I believe, was the descriptor, scripter for it, third report of the Planning and Environment Committee. Okay, thank you for that. We have the third report of the Corporate Services Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair McAllister to present his report.
Thank you, and through your worship, presenting the third report of the Corporate Services Committee. I've not been giving any of man's notice to have anything pulled, so I'd be happy to put items one through five on the floor.
Okay, anybody want anything dealt with separately from the Corporate Services Report? Okay, seeing none, then that's on the floor. All five items moved by the chair. I'll look for some comments from colleagues or debate. Okay, seeing none, then we'll open those five items for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll just go to Counselor Rahman for the report of council in closed session.
Thank you, through you. Your council in closed session report that progress was made with respect to item 4.1 is noted on the public agenda, 6.1-3 CSE.
All right, thank you very much. That's great. We have no deferred matters, inquiries. All right, seeing no inquiries.
I have one, or I guess a comment. I'm just looking for the proper time to make a statement.
Is it about meetings this week?
It is about meetings this week. So my inquiry for colleagues...
Counselor, just one sec. I'm going to, I'm going to do that, but let's just get through bylaws first, and then before we adjourn, I'll let you give just any sort of information for colleagues that you need to know for this week.
Right, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Emergent motions, seeing, oh, there are none. Bylaws, so we're going to deal with bylaws now. We're going to divide them out a little bit. I know there was a conflict, so Counselor Hopkins will make sure that we pull out the relevant bylaws for you. Go ahead, Counselor.
And number 71 as well.
Okay, while we're just piecing this together, anybody else looking for anything dealt with separately, aside from the items that Counselor Hopkins had a conflict on and Bill 71, which is the one that we just dealt with in the Planning Committee report, I believe? Yes. Anything else separate? We're pulling this together, so now's the time to let me know. All right, everybody looks good. We just need a moment to pull those together. Okay, while we're just preparing that motion, I'm just going to give colleagues just some commentary so that you know what we're lining up here. We're going to do all the bills with the exception of 57, 69, and 70, which will be dealt with separately as a batch. 71 will be dealt with separately as a batch. 72, just for your own interest, it's only first and second reading, we won't be doing third reading. That's a common thing with municipal drains. If you're excited about the Jenkins Municipal Drain, you'll have to wait for third reading and a subsequent meeting of council, but we're only doing first and second reading on Bill 72. It's a common thing with municipal drains. If you're interested, I'm sure Ms. Shire can talk to you all about it another time. So that's what we're lining up. And I'll just, I'll let you know when we're ready, and then I'll look for a mover and a second or for, for everything except 57, 69, 70, and 71. Those will be dealt with separately. Okay, and we're ready. So I'll need a mover and a second for everything except those items. Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. There's no discussion on first reading, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, second reading. I'll look for a mover and second, Counselor Rahman, seconded by Counselor McAllister. Any debate on second reading? Okay, seeing none. We will open that as soon as it's ready.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Third reading, mover and second, moved by Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Stevenson. There's no debate on third reading, so as soon as it's ready, it'll open for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, the next section, we're going to do the, the three bills that are related to the conflict that was declared by Counselor Hopkins, so 57, 69, and 70. I'll look for a mover and a second for those items. Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor McAllister. And as soon as that is ready, we will open it for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0 with one recused.
Okay, and second reading, I'll look for movers and seconders. Counselor Stevenson, Counselor Frank. Any debate on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting as soon as it's ready.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0 with one recused.
And third reading of those items, moved by Counselor Ferrera, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. We'll open that for voting as soon as it's ready.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0 with one recused.
Okay, and now Bill 71. I'll look for a mover and a second. This is the, okay, this is the amended version of Bill 71, which includes the decisions that were made earlier in the meeting. I'll look for a mover and a second, Counselor Stevenson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. We'll open that for voting as soon as it's ready.
Counselor Lehman? Closing the vote, motion carries 10 to 5.
Second reading, moved by Counselor Stevenson, seconded by Counselor Prible. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 10 to 5.
And third and final reading of this bill, moved by Counselor Stevenson, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Closing the vote, motion carries 10 to 5.
Okay, bylaws are done. Counselor Pelosi, you had just something for colleagues for this week for budget?
Yeah, ever so briefly, just a reminder to colleagues that we do commence budget meetings Thursday at 9:30 a.m. As of right now, I have no amendments. I was hoping to see some amendments tomorrow morning to give Clerks and Finance Team an opportunity to compile those and circulate them for all councillors. to compile those and circulate them for all councils, if we could have a full sum discussion. So just as of right now, I have none, so really hoping to see some soon. Thank you.
Okay. So everybody can look forward to budget this week. With that, there's no other business for municipal council, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Rahman, seconded by Counselor Trosaw. All those in favor of adjournment?
That motion carries.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.